Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to be alongside you all here today for this Houston City Council candidate forum. Thank you Danielle and Harris County Department of Education and all of our partners for organizing this event. My name is Adrian Saini and I'm the interim Texas Director of Civic Engagement for Nalo Educational Fund. Nalo Educational Fund is a nation's leading nonprofit nonprofit. Now, first, we need to say that's not why we're here today. We're here to hear more about these wonderful candidates who are trying to gain your votes and become the next PCC Councilmember on our position four. So again, we want to remind everyone a quick example of the rules. We want to give the community time, keep the time for all of our candidates as they give their responses and we'll give them an indication when there's 30 seconds remaining and also when their time is up. And all candidates were invited to attend this event and those who were able to join and start here on stage today as well as other candidates that have given. And we will be giving questions to everyone and we'll be following the order in their in doubt based on how they are listed there. We want to remind everyone that there are no rebotes or interruptions allowed during any other candidate's response if you don't press or pass at this place. Candidates are focused on their own standing on the issues at hand. The moderators will be able to stop before it reminds the ground rules if something goes out of bounds. So without further ado, let's get this started. We want to begin with opening the dressing room again for our candidates. So we will begin with our first candidate. We will be playing the video first for our first candidate. We do have on the ballot, on the candidates list after the first candidate who is on the ballot. So if you're invited to see this video, it's about the candidate. And so we have a good one.
For on this beautiful day, I am delighted to be at Fallbrook Church by church, and I am happy and honored to talk with our constituents, our residents about the issues that plague their community. I have 20 years of corporate experience, 10-plus years of nonprofit advocating, being a voice for the voiceless. I come from two union workers and I am a proud HBCU graduate, having my masters and bachelors. So I bring to you much experience, much experience that we can partner. I have no issues with working with the mayor, with partnering with other city council members, because collaboration is what it takes. Strengthening our community, family support services, senior services, and being a leg and a bridge to bridge the gap and close those much-needed resources that our our community needs is what I'm here to do. When you drive around the city of Houston and you see the desiccant properties and eyesores in the community, we can do better, Houston. When you drive around the city and you see homelessness, we can do better, Houston. When you look at the road conditions and drink the water and understand that our our support services, our resources can be better, we can do better, Houston. Strengthening our neighborhoods, better quality of life for our citizens, good, good care for our seniors, making sure that our homelessness is almost obsolete. Houston is a beautiful place to live, and I know together through collaboration, we can make that happen. Angie Tipido, Action Angie, Think It Through, there it is.
So you want to know who are you and why are you running for this open seat on Houston City Council?
Cindy, it's such a pleasure to be here. My name is Alejandra Salinas, and I've been and I'm running for this seat because I've spent the last 20 years of my life taking on big fights and getting things done. I got my start in politics organizing students nationally. President Barack Obama was so privileged to speak at the 2012 Democratic National Convention where I came out as LGBTQ to my friends and family. And for the past nine years, I've been a trial lawyer and partner at Sussman-Gopfry, one of the top litigation firms in the country, taking on some of the biggest companies in the world and holding them to account for their unjust practices, including most recently helping to secure a $1.5 billion settlement, the largest copyright settlement of its kind against an artificial intelligence company that was taking advantage of authors and their work. Microbono practice, I was so honored to represent Lena Hidalgo, Tanisha Husbith in 2022. When the Republicans tried to invalidate our election, we fought back and made sure that our election was secure. And I was also privileged to represent students in my million ISD who were being kicked out of class just because of the style of their hair. We fought back and made sure those students got to stay in class. I share all this with you because I know how to fight, and I've taken that fight and gotten things done for community over the last 20 years of my life in politics and the law. That's exactly what I want to do at City Hall. And my priority is simple, making sure that all Houstonians, no matter who you are, no matter where you come from, are treated with the equity, dignity, and respect that you deserve. You don't have to take my word for it that I'm going to be your biggest champion. Just look at all the incredible people, organizations, and unions that have endorsed our campaign. Some of our our community's biggest fighters like Congresswoman Sylvia Garcia, District Attorney Shontier Adrian Garcia, three city council members, including Sally Alcorn, six state representatives, and so many others have gotten behind this campaign, the Texas State AFL-CIO, and so many others because they know I'm going to be your best champion on council. I'd be so honored to earn your support and looking forward to today's conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salinas. Next, we have Ms. Kathy L. Tatum. So once again, who are you and why are you running for this open seat on Houston City Council?
Hello, good evening, everybody and everybody that's watching at home. I'm Kathy L. Tatum. I have been in property management since 1998 in Monta Family. Built them, managed them, from A properties to Z properties. I have literally also been a real estate agent since 2007. I do not show houses. This is where I place my domestic items and unhoused that everybody wants to speak about. I am a nonprofit leader, but at the end of the day, I'm boots on the ground. I just ran here because we literally put three people from wheelchairs into their new apartments. I need you guys to look up Collaborating Voices or Dr. Kathy L. Tatum if you do social media because you will physically see me, my husband, and my children doing the work that everybody keeps mentioning. If we're going to mess up and put somebody in office, that needs to come get me. And we keep closing nonprofits because people are not actually mentioning what the boots on the ground do, but actually mentioning stakeholders. And there's a huge difference. My biggest inbox of my inbox is at 2:00 on Sunday because people leave church and didn't get what they need, and then inbox me. And when you guys look up, it does not take very long to see that I've been here. If you want to mention Congresswoman Shion Jackson Lee, apparently she's been a lot of advertisement, her signs are in my office because right behind her, I'm standing there. That seems every single location. You need people that don't just speak about the resources, but you need to hire somebody that actually does the resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tatum. Next, Jordan Thomas.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jordan Thomas. I grew up in Houston, everywhere from Sunnyside to the suburbs of Katy. I grew up in a union family. My father was a shop steward, so it was no surprise when my first job out of college was as a union organizer. I helped healthcare workers get their benefits, and I helped them negotiate their contracts and start unions from scratch. I took that working-class fight to City Hall when I became the Chief of Staff to Amanda Edwards and Dr. Melissa Plummer, who are running to her place today. I was at the city just before COVID hit, when COVID hit, and just afterwards. That was a masterclass education in seeing what city services look like in good times, in times of crisis, and in times when we're trying to put the world back together again. I believe we learned a lot of lessons in that time, and we have unlearned those lessons since. One of the reasons that I'm running is so that we can bring back some of the things that we learned during that time. I left the city in 2021 after winter storm period. I could not understand how a critical piece of infrastructure, our nation's grid, could fail so many people at once. And so I started working on transforming our nation's power grid. That's what I do today. I serve as a project manager. I build multi-billion-dollar pieces of infrastructure to unite our nation's power grid. I want to bring that experience back to City Hall. My professional life has been one of solving problems. I'm someone who sees a problem, believe I have a unique set of skills to solve it, and I volunteer myself for it. I was endorsed by the Houston Chronicle last week, in part because they believe I have the most optimistic, most visionary set of insights for the future of our city. I'm looking forward to talking about that platform with you today, and I hope to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. And now Ethan Hale.
Hello, I'm Ethan Hale. I think politics should be a first. It started, I was born with a pregnancy, so politics is kind of very important in this country. And healthcare is kind of the entry point. So I mean, it's sort of, it's every year of kind of having to fight just to keep access to medication again and again and again. I missed the dose earlier this year because United Healthcare did not come through. And I think that access to healthcare is federally, we all know because they're cutting social security, they're cutting Medicaid. And in the time where the city should be backing that back, sure, that out, they're choosing not to. Instead, they're choosing to do the same cuts to go fund HPD, at least this mortarated service, services, infrastructure. And beyond that, I think our mayor's, our mayor is conquering vice. So is our council. I think someone needs to fight back against that, no matter how we can. I think we need someone to stand against the mayor, whoever that might be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan. And now we will move along with Martina Lamont Dixon.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank Harris County Department of Education for having us here this evening. I am Martina Lamont Dixon, and obviously, we're all here running for the at-large position four. I am a native Houstonian, proud graduate of North Shore High School, also have degrees from Auburn, LSU, and MBA from Cornell. But that is actually not the reason I'm running. The most important thing in our city is that we need someone in this seat who is a solution seeker. We deserve that. And I know people are saying that here today, but it's also about what have you done on the ground for your community? I live out in Kingwood, and I have family members who live all throughout this city. And the things that I see and the things that need to be done, you need someone that is willing to work across both sides of the aisle to get those things done. I'll give you one very quick example. I served on the UML ISD school board for eight years. My term just ended in June. Very proud of that. I was the legislative delegate for our school district all of that time. During Hurricane Harvey, I was flooded. I had 42 inches of water in my house and had to be rescued. If you looked outside, I had a pile of trash and the house that was in disarray, lost everything on our first board. During that time, UML ISD asked me to go to DC to expedite FEMA funds. Well, let me just tell you, expediting FEMA funds is not a real thing. As a matter of fact, our school district had just died on last check for Mike. I went to DC even though I was dealing with a lot personally on behalf of the school district because we had to revoke Kingwood High School and many other things. But one thing I can say, that visit, I came home with $100 billion to my community. That is what I do when I'm working on the ground to support the people and the things that need to be done. I would like to do the exact same on Houston City Council, and thank you so much. I look forward to answering the questions this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Now, along to Mr. Dwight Boykins.
I kind of hate everybody to start standing up. I want to sit down. I'm tall. Good evening. Let me thank Superintendent James Coburn for having us open up this building. Danielle, good to see you. Thank you, guys, for having us. My name is Dwight Boykins. For those who have not had opportunity to meet, I'm from Houston, Texas Southern University School of Business, senior of Boston High School. But I cut my teeth in politics many years ago with what I did not until who taught me what being a public service servant was all about. And opportunity to work with government executives and work with Shion Jackson Lee to learn how you treat people, even though I had it in my core, through politics. Had opportunity to serve on city council for six years. I was Chair of the Ethics Committee. I sat on Budget and Finance Committee, and I sat on the Housing Committee. I took care of my constituents in District B. Learning from the Housing Committee that there were some issues facing my community was important. That was called food deserts. So you drive down 288 in South North Gregory, you said brand-new HEB. I used my experience working in Washington DC by way to pursue 14 bay logs to help address the food desert in my community. Also, before time ran out, I see Francisco Sanchez. Most people probably not even know who that gentleman is, but I was in the trenches with him during the last two hurricanes. He worked with the county. And we were in the trenches solving problems in our community. One situation real quick, we were standing at the podium and people driving off into 288 into the water, and I left them back there. And when he got my truck and blocked the pathway into 288, he stood out in the traffic. The thought I'm making is, you have to be a unique type of council member. If you want to serve people, you have to be committed to them. Not committed to being called the Honorable, committed to just being elected. You have to serve. You have 15 other councilmen and there you have to work with to get things done. My experience will carry me day one into this seat to do what's right for Houston, for people in Houston. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Boykins. And we move along to Ms. Crystal Tazalines.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Crystal Tazalines. I am your only running candidate here on the stage tonight due to technical difficulties. I am advocating for a strong, smart Houston. Houston is the leading consumer when it comes to energy, and we should be the blueprint that other cities look after. I'm advocating that we have smarter infrastructure. My background is in finance. I'm a former stockbroker, so I understand numbers. I understand this $7 million budget and the $200 million deficit that we are facing. We need someone at this seat who understands how our city can pivot. We've got to pivot. We need smart streets. We need smart streetlights. I'm advocating that we use technology and data going forward. I am your only candidate again with this financial background. I'm advocating for equity, innovation. Currently, I'm a nonprofit. Some of my staff and interns are here today. I work with 12 different universities in a public partnership, getting some of my social workers into jobs. My goal as well is for manufacturing. Times that innovation gap, there's a lot of single mothers as well as youth that are in our streets that are causing the issue that we have with public safety. And we solve the issue of public safety by giving people jobs, building that workforce gap. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. We'll move along to our first question for our candidates. According to both the 2025 Kinder Houston Area Survey and the 2025 U of H Hobby School Issue and Politics Survey, crime remains the number one concern for Houstonians. Residents want safer neighborhoods, but also expect fairness and accountability in how public safety is handled. How would you approach with creating a safer city? Our first respondent will be Ms. Alejandra Salinas.
Thank you for the question. You know, this is an issue that obviously is very personal for a lot of people, and I didn't quite understand it ethically until there was a murder right on my street. And I got to experience firsthand what that fear can be like. And I completely agree that we as a city have to make sure that all of our residents are safe. And for me, something I've learned being a trial lawyer is you have to learn, understand what you know, what you don't know, and ask a lot of questions and listen. So the thing I've done on this campaign is try to listen as much as possible to all sides of the conversation. That meant doing a police ride-along and sitting with a law enforcement officer for six hours in his vehicle and understanding what he is facing, what his challenges are, but also meeting with people in community and hearing from them what works and what doesn't. And the takeaway I've gotten is that we need an above-all approach. So one, making sure law enforcement has the resources they need, two, addressing the issues, challenges like there are not enough cop cars in the city of Houston to patrol the city. We have officers waiting to go out on shift because there are not enough cars for them to do it. Getting those basics right, where they have the resources they need, but also known community-based approaches to policing. In Boston, Mayor Wu has decreased murder by 70% by using community-based approaches to hotspot areas. So that means not just increased enforcement, but community-based resources like mental health resources, anti-gang resources, job corps resources. So people have an option and alternative to recidivism. I want to champion those known community-based approaches to addressing our annoying causes of crime, to make sure that we do it all. I think together, that's when we bring down crime and make people feel safer.
Thank you, Ms. Salinas. And now, here from Dr. Tatum. How would you approach with creating a safer city?
Okay, first of all, you will hear me saying, I am, and I, he spoke for me, and then I do. First of all, I come from all kinds of crime, and I say, I've lived and experienced. I was captive for 14 years in my mom's basement. I have six to seven gunshot wounds, 14 stabs. I've been raped, gang raped. What else y'all need to know? Because at the end of the day, I take my lived and experienced. I've been a fellow of every time, every time of good safety for eight years. I have marched for Moms Demand Action. I'm the one that comes out at 2:00 in the morning. I understand that the city, and this is a problem, won't let other nonprofits that are actually boots on the ground be a stakeholder. You guys got to understand what a stakeholder is. A stakeholder is somebody that gets paid on the side, but usually in high heels and a suit. And I'm going to say that again, because at the end of the day, you will realize that a lot of people up here are running because they run nonprofits. There's a difference between running a nonprofit and everything else. I've been splattered with blood. I have moved bodies out of apartment complexes. I literally am begging the city of Houston, ones that are already there, I'm building a resilient tub. It's $5 million. I've already came up with $4 million, and you have heard on the news right now about super hubs. Every last one of them have been in my office, and I said, I have super hubs. We have not talked at our posted doors, and now all of a sudden, they want $120 million for their super hubs. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Tatum. Now, Mr. Jordan Thomas.
Thank you. I want to apologize. I'm getting a bit of a cold right now, so I apologize for my voice. On prior, the dominant view at City Hall right now across our city is that 670 square miles of territory can be effectively policed at community level by about 1,000 people patrolling per shift. It has not worked. It will not work. Our city is spread too far for so few people to police such a region. We need to get surgical and do more with what we do now. The city that I live towards that's gotten it right is Baltimore. What Baltimore did is through data, they found that a small percentage of criminals are committing the majority of the crime, and these are repeat criminals. What they did is they tracked them down, and the mayor sent them a message. He sent them a letter to their home. She said, I know who you are. I know where you live. I know what you do. You have two choices if you continue down this path. You're either going to end up in jail again, or you are going to die on the streets. I don't want that for you. If you need an education, I will get it for you. If you need job training, I will get it for you. But if you continue to do what you do, we will comfort you. That's the approach that we have to take across such a large city with so few resources. We ask our police to be too much. There's other things that we can do in order to improve response times. I mean, Dallas is an example here. Everyone, or most people, me at least, you've got your window broken in, and you have to call the cops and wait for an inordinate amount of time in order for them to give you a police report. Dallas has digitized that system. So you take a picture, you send a report, it goes immediately to the Dallas Police Department. It's time, let me just finish the thought. It comes back and you get a case timer and a fairytale for all the candidates. They've saved 50,000 man-hours by doing this. We too can do this.
Moving along to our candidate next candidate, Ethan Hale. How would you approach creating a safer city?
I think for me, crime, crime is largely economic. That's where we need to be starting. We need to get more job training, give more people access to healthcare, public housing. I think if you take, if you give people all those three, I mean, crime in this city is going to plummet, at least as far as economic motivating parameters, yes. I think, so I think right now, the housing department is, we need to be expanding it, and we also need to be rooting out the corruption within it. People just giving everybody's contracts, wasting money. The apartments are filled with mold and filled with rats. So however we can in our city to improve the material conditions, I think we need to root this in. I think police is just, it's abandoned. You can't police away economic issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Now, Ms. Lamont Dixon.
Thank you. Well, I will share with you that I have a lot of experience in this area. On the UML ISD school board, we have one of the top three ISD police departments in the state of Texas. That is by design. Resources, resources, resources. That is what officers need. I have spent a lot of time talking to law enforcement about what their needs are. The city has done a great job increasing their pay. That was important, too, because you need to be selective on who you hire as officers. But ultimately, when I think about UML ISD, for instance, and the experience there and the support given to our police department, they also have become the first ISD and only currently ISD police department that is a T-CO certified police department in a school district. And I'm mentioning T-CO, that is the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. I am a former commissioner for the state of Texas on the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. Part of that role is we get the bad cops off the streets, and we revere and honor the good cops and make sure that they have the things that they need. Going forward in the city of Houston, making sure the resources are there for our officers is the key to making sure you have response times that are equivalent across the city. It's the key to making sure the relationships in the streets are important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lamont Dixon. Now, Mr. Dwight Boykins. Question is for you. How would you approach creating a safer city?
Thank you. Let me first off, I said to Dr. Tatum, if you tell your story, ma'am, I just want you to admire you, and I hate that happens to you, but it means a lot to hear you say that and to just deal with that. That's real. I worked at the Harris County District Attorney's Office for two years. I got a chance to see all kinds of crime in this city, and I can tell you, I learned a lot. I've been endorsed by almost every police agency in the city of Houston, starting from former Mayor Lindsey Brown, Harris County Sheriff Ed Gonzalez, Harris County Constable Jerry Garcia, Smokey Phillips. The Texas Deputy's Lee just called me out the blue and told he was endorsing me. Let me tell you why. My plan is very simple. When I was on city council, I presented it, and I'm a presenter again over there with mine. It's called community policing. Community policing will allow police officers that live within the city of Houston on an eight-hour shift to be able to take the patrol cars home with their little inside Houston. But in order to do that, participate in the program, you have to patrol 30 minutes before you go to work, 30 minutes when you return home, within a two-mile radius of your house. Park the car in front of your house. I guarantee you, crime will be reduced in that neighborhood within a few blocks. I guarantee it. So that's the plan I'm going to implement. I'm going to bring it to the mayor and sit down and talk with him about it. But also, I want to say this real quick before people run with this, crime is moving in the right direction in Houston. We're a big city. This mayor and council is doing a good job of trying to reduce crime in this city, and I just refuse to let people try to scare you that our city is running that is not. Thank you. Sorry.
And now, Ms. Crystal Tazalines. You, how would you approach creating a safer city?
So about a month ago, I received a call at 2:00 AM, and it was from one of our U. He was getting kicked out of his place that was a residential treatment center, and he had no place to go. He had previously been to a juvenile detention center at least two times, and they were saying that he was being cut off from the system. So he literally called me at 2:00 in the morning. We gave him housing. We housed him. We gave him mentorship. We gave him behavioral healthcare. These are U that are on our streets committing crimes. When we talk about crimes, there have been 16 bodies that have been found in the body. I'm sure you guys have seen what's happening, and it's serious. Yes, Mayor Whitmore has done a great job of making sure that we have police out and more, a multitude of them. The issue now is that we have to rebuild trust. You have to trust the police system. You have to know that they're there to help. And the way that we do this is we have a trauma-informed care approach to trauma. When our police officers go out, our When our police officers go out, I would recommend that we have social workers go out with them, or we have peer support advocates if this is a victim of domestic violence, so that they feel safe, secure, and that they can actually trust the police. Obviously, I'm advocating for a smart city, so we definitely need to use digital data to figure out where our hotspots are, so that we are proactive and we are preventative as far as public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crystal Lyons. Moving along to our second question of the evening. Houston residents report that roads, streets, and basic services like trash collection, water, and transit are in a poor condition. At the same time, many neighborhoods feel that they are overlooked. The first question or response will come from Ms. Aragla Salinas. How will you improve the reliability of these basic services for all neighborhoods?
Again, great question. This is one of the principal reasons I'm running into this race. I think one of the messages voters sent us in this last election is that they don't trust government. And one of the best ways we can rebuild that trust is by improving the government people interact with most, and that is local government. That's the street you drive down, that's the water you drink, that's the police you interact with. And for too many Houstonians, as we all know, that government is not working equitably, and it's not treating all Houstonians the basic services they deserve. The way I want to, the way I want to focus on this is, folks can see the city on getting back to the basics, and that means picking up the trash. That means picking up the recycling, and it actually going to a recycling plant and not ending up in a dumpster. Making sure that would give our municipal workers the resources they need to get these things done. I'm so honored to have been endorsed by Hope, the Municipal Workers Union, because they know that I'm gonna fight to make sure that they have the resources they need to do the job that Houstonians expected them. But we need to be realistic with voters about what these things cost, and to the extent there are additional resources needed, making sure we're making the investments to do so. And one of the things that I'm, one of the first things I want to fight for on council is making sure that we are fighting for grants from the state and federal government to provide the resources so we can provide those services. Right now, the Department of Public Works does not have dedicated grant writers. Different departments are applying for the same grant. We are losing out on billions of dollars to New York, LA, and Chicago, because we are not being aggressive on that front. That's one of the first things I want to champion for. I know we can do as a city to provide additional resources to get those basics right.
Thank you, Ms. Salinas. And now, Dr. Tatum. How would you approach, or how would you improve the reliability of basic services for all neighborhoods?
Because I've looked around at every neighborhood, this week alone, I've probably seen Southwest Side, Fort Bend, Montgomery. And because I've polled over three hundred and ninety-two nonprofits, and in my Facebook group, it's over thirty-two thousand across the United States, I've talked to so many people. They're not saying anything wrong, just like she said down there about grant writing. I had a grant that I wrote, but it was for twenty million dollars for the police, and that one person returned my call. And the reason why I say that is, we have a real problem. We're not acknowledging that there's more nonprofits out there that's cleaning out jurisdictions, that's cleaning up their neighborhoods, and they have asked the city that we don't want grass going up because we don't want snakes. But they ignore those people. My voice is for those that are actually doing the work and actually coming to front. I am a grant writer. I brought in eighty million dollars this year alone. Hopefully, I'll be three hundred million. And I just want to go to Houston. I do LA when they had the fire. Those are the diva. I got them a warehouse. Here, you saw Train the Truth and everybody, that's my warehouse they're bringing out. I've been literally here cleaning up messes since Hurricane Katrina. You guys saw Oprah, but you did not acknowledge that I moved thirty-six thousand people from all across the United States from Hurricane Katrina. And those are our eyes and ears. So there's nothing that somebody's doing wrong and saying here, but we gotta understand that I go all across Houston, and this is that at-large. Not that I grew up on this side of town. It's at-large, and we need somebody that's everything, but talking to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Now, Mr. Thomas, question is for you. How will you improve the reliability of these basic services for all neighborhoods?
So the last year that we have complete data for 311 calls, 224, the number one call that people call 311 for is miss trash pickup, miss recycle. The number two is for water leaks. The number three is for nuisances on properties. And they're concentrated in pretty much the same districts. District H, District B, District D, District I. That tells me, one, we need to have an equity framework. We need surgical in the places that we're looking at that have the highest hotspots and calls for these broken services. Number two, I was very frustrated today watching council to see that the mayor put forward a budget this summer that called for one rate of property taxes, and he didn't follow through on it today. And so now, that's produced a fifty-three-million-dollar deficit that's gonna have to be patched up immediately and has increased next year's budget to about two-hundred-and-twenty-seven million dollars. We have got to be open and honest and transparent. People voted based on one thing that the mayor said, and today, we found out something different. I am seeing a trend in that we are not involving the public in public policymaking. We can't be honest about how we're gonna fix services if we can't be transparent about how we're gonna pay for them. The mayor said he has a plan. He's holding it close to his chest. Trust him. He'll let you know once he's ready. That's no way in the modest city of two-point-three-million people.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Now, Mr. Hale, questions for you. How will you improve the reliability of these basic services for all neighborhoods?
Yeah, so I think we, like Jordan said, the mayor came in and was saying he was gonna balance the budget. He didn't. Now we're looking at a new chess set. But I think we are going to have to patch that at this point, which means likely a tax site or a Dan or a garbage heap, which like a garbage heap, you know, twenty mils probably have to throw in a low-income option. I think we could fix our, fix our trash pickup issue like that. I think it's also partly what the mayor did early in his term. He forced out a large number of municipal workers. And now, because of that, we lost our experience. Years of experience on the job are gone, and we don't have manpower at all to pick that back up. So I think we need to be, consider lifting the hierarchy, raise more people on so we can actually have people that come out there and fix the problems that's going on within our city.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Ms. Lamont Dixon.
Again, I just need to experience. I have a degree in construction management. I also was the CEO of a construction services company. When I look at the basic services, or what I consider basic services, we look at our streets and our sidewalks, that should be a given. We shouldn't have to fight to have those things fixed. There are communities where they are fixed already, so that should be reflective across the entire city. When you, when I think about how to do that, I would say, number one, you do public-private partnerships. Number two, you could expedite the permitting process so that we can move projects faster, because you save money when projects move faster. Those are just things that we have done for eight years that I served on the UMLISD school board on the Building and Planning Committee. When we hit a bridge for our students to get across a railroad track to a new elementary school, I came and met with Commissioner Ellis's team and said, "Can we put in some money? You put in some money. You do the engineering design, and we work together to build the bridge." He said, "Yes," and we got that done. You have to work on both sides of the aisle. You have to think outside of the box. But it can be done, and these are the basic fundamentals that we all should have. I have a lot of experience doing this type of work, and I look forward to doing it on City Council.
Thank you, Ms. Lamont Dixon. Mr. Boykins, for you. How will you improve the reliability of these basic services for all neighborhoods?
Thank you very much. I think when you talk about experience, I think I probably have the most experience of understanding how a city government works. And let me be clear. I think it's important that people make certain they make statements that they are factual, and not just throwing scare tactics or words just to try to impress you. To understand when the mayor or the council make a decision, when you sit at that horse sheet, you understand why. And you understand when decisions are made and the impact of those decisions. But let me just talk about a couple of things that are very important to the city and the quality of life of people, and that's infrastructure. You see, I created, I was part of a program that created this infrastructure initiative called Rego Houston. It's now called Move Houston Forward. And when I met with the mayor and I told him, he was up front, and I said, "Mayor, we told people we're gonna fix the streets and drainage, not overlabel blacktops," and he agreed. He agreed with that because the Supreme Court and the district court sued the city and said, "You owe money back." And I said, "If I'm fortunate enough to become your council member, become a council member, I'm sorry, I want to make sure that I help protect that money. I want to make sure that the people in the city don't lose trust in Houstonians and understand that we're gonna get these streets fixed." With regards to the garbage heap, in 2014, I proposed it with exemptions of disabled veterans and seniors. And it was generating enough money where we could remove money out of the fund, place that in an enterprise fund, not pay firefighters, ma'am. Place it in an enterprise fund that's protected to be able to pay our garbage workers a quality salary and new equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Boykins. Mr. Thomas Lyons.
So let's remember, this is an at-large position. So we're talking about our entire city of Houston, from the north side to the south side. When we have hurricane Harvey, I was looking around helping the independent heights area repair from seniors to veterans to families, figure out how they're gonna get the basic services that they need. When we talk about priorities, this is our equity priority. Houses is equal in every area. You should not have to drive from the north side to LA so that your child can get the proper education. Right now, we have twenty percent of youth that actually graduate at the age of eighteen and go to a job making a median wage salary. That's unfortunate. We have streets with potholes in them that we're walking, that we're driving over. We have neighborhoods that have long wait times. I will prioritize those neighborhoods so that there's equal access everywhere. As far as the 311 calls, a lot of people don't know about the resources. I also host a quarterly tacos and tea event where nonprofits come together and they talk about these resources. I have been to DC, and I have advocated against the One Big Beautiful Bill for SNAP and for Medicaid for our youth. I've been to Austin to advocate as well. It's important that we understand the partnerships that can be developed so that all of our areas can have access to the basic services that they need. We have civic clubs. We have super neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas Lyons. Now, you've heard from our candidates on their stances on crime and infrastructure. But let's transition to leadership. And we'll begin with Ms. Aragla Salinas. If elected, what would be your first policy priority, and how would you work to make progress on it?
So I've talked a little bit about the grant writing, so I don't want to repeat that. But another issue that is very dear, near and dear to my heart is water infrastructure. Right now, we are losing thirty-two billion gallons of water underground due to leaking pipes. That is enough water to service the city of Fort Worth. We are a nation and a globe in the midst of a water crisis. That is unacceptable. We, as a city, need to fight for state dollars that have been allocated to fix our water infrastructure to ensure that our basic infrastructure doesn't stop working. We know what happens in the city when power doesn't work. We cannot allow that to happen to our water infrastructure. And so I want to prioritize bringing awareness to this issue, fighting for those state federal dollars to fix our water infrastructures to ensure that we always will have safe and clean drinking water and maintain the greenery. Because as the city continues to grow, we cannot afford to allow that to go to waste. So I want to fight to bring that, in addition to the things that we've talked about, of additional grant writing and ensuring that we're getting our basic, and the basic city services right.
Thank you, Ms. Salinas. Now, Dr. Tatum, for you. If elected, what would be your first policy priority, and how would you work to make progress on it?
Okay, so my first priority is we need more transparency. And because I do what I do, there is people that be smiling, not up here, but be smiling in your face. And literally, I've been a part of, a lot of times, people think that I'm the photographer of video, but I have tons of video because I take a lot of pictures with other politicians for the last ten years. But when I tell you that I would put up some billboards and make a policy of how much some people make, you would be shocked. And when we're talking about the unhoused, but Mike is over there talking about we need a infrastructure, but he makes seven-point-five million dollars, and this nonprofit over here, if you take twenty million dollars of fundraising and almost fifteen million goes to actually the people in the office, that's why we got other resources. Because literally, the people in the offices that don't come out in our community unless it's a press conference, it should be on billboards. I should not, even when she said the super neighborhoods, they should know how much people are smiling in their faces. As a person that does human trafficking, we are working with some policies right now called CBI, Critical Messengers, and ninety percent of the pastors are sex offenders. Thank you so much.
Mr. Thomas. Thank you for your questions, certain questions on leadership. And if elected, what would be your first policy priority, and how would you work to make progress on it?
The secret sauce of Houston, what makes it such an attractive, desirable city, basically our competitors, is our affordability. You can come here and get more going, more space than some other cities. That is a rumor slipping away from us year by year. The most important thing that I think I can work on is some low-risk group called the Comprehensive Housing Plan. Right now, the way that we do housing in Harris County, there are maybe eight or nine different entities that work with different pots of money and have different plans on how they want to go about housing. I think the city needs to be D-leader in this area so that we can continue to attract residents and be an affordable city. To do so, such a plan would cost about two to three million dollars to do it. I think that's very reasonable. There are many advocacy groups that have already been working on it across the city. They just haven't had a champion in City Hall say, "Hey, we've written a whole bunch of plans. Let's get everybody in a room and make this policy." That's a place where I want to lead. The other, the other place, well, let me stick with that for a second. There's a study that comes out every year called the Milken Index. It ranks major cities on, you know, how they, how they compete on inequality, housing, affordability. Houston's actually done well year by year, this marker, was the anchor around our net, holding us back. We ranked one-hundred-and-forty-fifth on affordability, one-hundred-and-fiftieth on resiliency to our preparedness for natural disasters, and one-hundred-and-sixty-fourth on inequality. We cannot beat that city anymore. That's why a housing plan is so important.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Hale, for you.
For me, we really need a lot more transparency and accountability in the city. I think we're seeing, especially East End, right now, Paul Street, they got no notice, no public hearings. They just come rip up their neighborhood. Essentially, they are, they're redlining the East End of Houston at this point. And I think, and beyond that, they're just, they're, beyond the red line is they're pushing the homeless population into there, cutting them off from the rest of the city because using the East End that don't offer a desire. I mean, I think the city needs to be adopting a set of standards for every single project we're doing. We need, people need to know if their communities, they're ripping out, they're putting a new center, ripping out road, ripping up roads in your neighborhood. I think people should be, have a right to a public hearing, community input. I think creating awareness to do something along those lines, to standardize that input, I think would probably be the only thing we need to do.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Ms. Lamont Dixon.
My number one priority would be fixing our flooding issues. We can talk today about transparency. We can talk about jobs. We can talk about police officers, infrastructure. None of that is going to matter if we do not fix the flooding issues. The water is flowing from north to south. How quick the water came into my home, you would be shocked unless you were flooded, honestly. If you've been flooded, you know what I'm talking about. For me, I have done the work in this space already for my community. I would love the opportunity to do it for the entire city. I am passionate about it because I've experienced it. It is one of the most gut-wrenching, heart-wrenching things a person can endure. It's not about the stuff. It's just about the entire destruction of a community. When we are talking here today, some of the most important pieces are going to be in public-private partnerships, with the city partnering with the county. We have to put in more gates. We've gotta continue doing more dredging. We even gotta work outside of the city with the San Antonio River Authority in order to fix the flooding issues. If we do not do that, none of what we're talking about is going to matter because lives will be lost and destruction will happen in our city. We have got to focus on safety, and when I say And when I say safety, yes, I'm talking about public safety from a police standpoint, but I'm talking about our lives when it comes to flooding.
That is time. Thank you, Ms. Lamont Dixon. Mr. Boykins, for you.
Thank you very much. Within the first 30 days, I will formulate a committee that will consist of citizen, regular citizens and professionals to be able to make sure to recreate a committee that will see and hope to be an oversight to the Move Houston Forward Fund. That's important to me because if we can make sure that fund is protected, we can get the streets and drainage done in the city. The second thing, I will formulate a committee to travel with me to Washington D.C., New York Army Corps of Engineers, and come back and include Coastal Water Authority to try to find, as Ms. Dixon just mentioned, some money for additional floodgates out in Kingwood area. We have to have those because the water flows from Lake Houston down to Houston, as she mentioned, out south. And we have a plan to know how to get that money. The third thing I wanna do is make sure in this first 60 days that I'm able to finance directly, to see if we can look at some of the municipal bonds we have and refinance, take those savings and give the paid increase to city employees. And by the way, I was endorsed by city employees as well. Hope. So I think that's important. And again, my experience would play a major role in being able to implement what I wanna get done. I know exactly what I will do in the first 30 to 60 days of my tenure of city council. But the most important thing is to make sure that the citizens know they have access to me and that I'm not a fifth council member at large, I'm your number one council member.
Thank you, Mr. Boykins. Mr. Todd Zalins, for you.
So right now, today, we all came after five minutes after work. My number one priority will be workforce development. Upskilling the work. When we talk about our police department and how they have higher wages, I know a lot of people have been upset about that. However, I believe that every person sitting in this room needs to be paid more than what they're paid right now. I would advocate that we upskill our workforce. I started the Strong Smart Innovation Center last year, and it is a workforce development program. It's an apprenticeship program for youth from 16 to 25 so that they can go to jobs with technology, artificial intelligence, data, trade. So we're talking about plumbing, we're talking about HVAC. We have a lot of gaps to fill in these areas. Workforce solves a lot of problems. If you don't work, you look for crime, you commit crimes, you don't have a place to stay possibly. We know the issue with affordable housing, you can't, you're priced out of your house. There's so many things that are affected. I would advocate that we open up our decommissioned hobby areas and we make them innovation centers. Right now, we need to bring in revenue, and we can do that through workforce development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Todd Zalins. Now, we're getting to our final question for the evening for all of our candidates. So this will serve as your closing remarks. But the question is, what do you want voters to remember about you as they add to the polls? We'll begin with Ms. Arejanda Salinas.
So I think what matters, I mean, first off, I wanna thank everyone for being here today. I want you all to give yourselves, truly, give yourselves a round of applause. You could have been anywhere today, you have a million other commitments, but you're here because you really care about the city. And I gotta tell you, this campaign is giving me so much hope. There are so many terrible things going on in Austin and Washington. But this campaign reminds me that so many people care so much about their community. And we're going to be okay because of the people in this room and the people out there that know that we can do better. And the only thing you can remember about me is that you have my word that each and every day, I'm gonna do everything in my power to fight to make sure that all of us, especially the least among us, are heard and that their issues are fought for. And the reason that matters to me is I grew up in a family where my great-grandfather started off as a janitor of meatpacking plant. And when he was in his mid-20s, he bought that little plant and went on to employ hundreds of people. So when you grow up in a family where your great-grandfather was both a CEO and a janitor, you understand that you treat everybody with dignity, respect, and fight for everyone. And that's what I'm gonna do at City Council.
Thank you, Ms. Salinas. Dr. Tatum, for you. What do you want voters to remember about you as they add to the polls?
That I'm trying to strive to get to heaven, y'all, maybe well. At the end of the day, my passion comes from hurt. I have been lied to over and over. I represent almost 126 nonprofits that are sitting on that homeless coalition that they use our data, the Black and Brown community. I have pharmacists that we have to get medicine outside of this state, and we fund so many organizations. I might not have time to go get letters and anything like that, but I need you guys to know that we don't have a representative for District 18 because we decided to put the same people in office. And when people say they have experience, I guarantee you that experience is to call a person like myself, which is resources. No matter what neighborhood you go into, when something happens, you want something. And when a food bank has a distribution that doesn't have our foster care, our Alzheimer's, I'm actually out there fighting for our seniors. I'm in the seniors property. So if you want to know anything about me, is I have lived in experience and I'm fighting for whatever it is and that people who work for City Council...
Mr. Thomas, question for you. What do you want voters to remember about you as they add to the polls?
Thank you. I would like everyone to go to my website, voteforthomas.com, and please read the Houston Chronicles endorsement with me. In it, it called me a policy wonk. I want you to read every word of that endorsement, and I want you to forget it entirely and remember this. I have never seen myself as a policy wonk. I'm a kid from Sunnyside who really did these issues. I care so much about affordable housing because I remember the day my mother reached her lifelong dream and got money in order to afford it down payment on a house. And I remember the day that financing fell through at the broker heart. I care so much about crime because I had two uncles who suffered from drug addiction and were in and out of prison. They didn't need a jail cell, they needed a second chance. I care so much about transportation because my grandmother sometimes had a car, sometimes didn't. I remember waiting for the bus and missing the bus. I don't write policy platforms. I write the stories of hundreds of thousands of Houstonians who've been left behind and forgotten. I'm gonna be a city council and will forget it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Hale, question for you. What do you want voters to remember about you as they add to the polls?
From early on, since the mayor has elected, I've been fighting for the city. If I was ground zero, if I'm just ripping out state street infrastructures, they'd be more difficult to get around. I think from there, it's been it. I protested the guy a number of times. I'm trying to recall the guy rooting for office in a year and an hour before I am deciding whether I was gonna run for council. And I think, I mean, I took myself at risk to make this thing. Did push around by the cops, got burned on his fence, thrown out of City Hall. I think we need someone who's willing to put themselves at risk. I guess the Trump administration and our own mini-Trump in our city here.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Ms. Lamont Dixon?
Yes. I was raised to be a champion for the people. I grew up in a household with my four younger brothers. But after my parents raised the five of us, they were foster parents for many, many years and eventually became parents to two more boys. So I have six brothers now. But in my household, when I was growing up, the question was always, "What are you doing? What are you doing to serve? You know, what can you do better?" That has just been the person that I've been, is the person that I have been raised to be. I have proven and proven leadership experience in all of the priorities needed. I am true to my word. And if you just want to look back, I know I pitched an Uble I S D. My last poll election, I won by 80% of the vote, we are all at large. So that tells you, in a community with Kingwood, tacitly an Uble, that they know that I serve everyone. Receiving almost 80% of the vote in Uble I S D literally is unheard of. Please get online and check all of the candidates here. You have lots of great people. And happy for us to answer fairness law, if I have to say that, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Lamont Dixon. Mr. Boykins?
I think I had about 82% of my race mistaken. I'm just kidding. I love this city. Houston's been great to me. As a native Houstonian, the diversity that I grew up with, the Hispanic community, the Haitian community, has just made me a better person. Our city is moving in the right direction, you guys. I'm not gonna sit up here and try to throw scare tactics to make you feel like you you should be fearful of your life. I've served under two different mayors and I've seen where our city is going. And I'm excited, and I'm gonna be a part of it. But I tell you I'm gonna do something, I'm gonna do it. When I was a district councilor, I told the voters I was gonna do four things. Create a terrace in the Sunnyside area that started at $140,000 at 8 May. I was gonna create a program to help senior citizens with minor home repairs at no cost. 607 homes later. I was gonna bring grocery stores to address the mood there as an issue in my community. Not one, but two. The ATB O288, that's my store, well, not mine, but I brought it in. And then I said I was gonna create a terrace. And I just want you to know, if I tell you I'm gonna do something, I'm gonna do it. And I think that experience matters.
Thank you, Mr. Boykins. Finally, Mr. Todd Zalins?
So again, I am your only writing candidate. So if you don't agree with me, you remember that I am the only writing candidate that is a city here before you today. 2% of Austin U. actually graduate high school and attend college. I am one of those 2% as a former Austin U. that have graduated and attended college. I want you to remember that I am the candidate that is here today talking to you about how we need to make our city smart, how we need to be the blueprint for San Antonio, for Dallas, and for Austin. I'm advocating for smarter infrastructure. Smart streets, smart streetlights, everything. I've built nonprofits. I've put capital in build for profits. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Todd Zalins. And that does it for our forum this evening. First, let's give all of our candidates a big round of applause. And now we have Harris County Department of Education and now the Educational Fund, the Legal Limitations of Houston, Pico Mira Lección, and PC Empowerment Initiative. We wanna thank you all for your attendance, as well as you for watching us streaming as well, and everyone who participated in organizing this event. We're gonna remind you about early voting, which begins on October 20th, and make sure you cast your ballot no later than Election Day on November 4th. And be sure to stop by with all of our friends at Resources, 866-HAR-VOTE, 888-BAY, or your election protection hotline for information and resources, and all of our friends such as the Legal Limitations Voters and their Voters Guy. Thank you all so much, and have a wonderful evening.